I call to order the Calhwyte County Board of Education meeting, agenda seven forty, six thirty PM, August the eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Let's stand for the pledge in a moment of silence.
Okay, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And we are a republic, always and stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Dr. Horton, recognitions.
No recognition, Madam Chairman.
Dr. Horton, approved minutes, oh, sorry about that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, seven to zero. Do I have a motion to approve the called minutes of July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Dr. Horton, action items, group one.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First action item I have for you tonight in group one is to approve CTAE Carl D. Perkins' fifth federal grants. Board approval is required for three career technical and agricultural educational related grants for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. As per Perkins and CTAE guidelines, board approval must be obtained before these grants can be encumbered. First grant is Carl D. Perkins' five grants in the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. This grant is to be used for the purpose of equipment, supplies, professional development, and program improvement for CTAE programs and courses at Central Educational Center, East Calhwyte High School, Noonan High School, and Northgate High School. The second one is CTAE state grants in the amount of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. This grant is used for career tech educational extended day pay, apprenticeship, and supervision pay for CTAE programs. Last one is Federal CARES Act funds in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. This grant is issued for career technical education extended day pay, apprenticeship, and supervision pay for CTAE programs system wide. Board approval for these grants is requested. Total of these grants is two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Upon local board approval, applications will be sent to the Georgia Department of Education for their approval. Madam Chairman, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the CTAE Carl D. Perkins grants. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you tonight is to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Calhwyte County School System and Calhwyte County for a disc golf course. Approval is requested to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Calhwyte County and the Calhwyte County School System to grant easements to access and construct a disc golf course on Calhwyte County School System property behind Poplar Road Elementary School, adjacent to the Hunter Recreation Complex. A copy of the intergovernmental agreement and the site plan is attached. I will note for you, this is on land that is in between Hunter Complex and Poplar Road Elementary. The school system does not use this land at all. The county's requesting to be able to come in and do some clear cutting and use that for a disc golf course. I had to do a little research on disc golf. Apparently, this is something that in the event that we ever decide that we want to use that land for any purpose, it's a matter of just coming in and removing the baskets that they play disc golf with. So, Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Do I have a motion to approve into an intergovernmental agreement between Calhwyte County School System and Calhwyte County for a disc golf course? Any discussion?
Yes, is this going to become a cost line item for the school system? Are we gonna make any money on it?
No, ma'am, I don't anticipate us making any money on it.
So, basically, we're just granting the county the use of the land. If we decide that the school system would like to utilize this facility, are we gonna have to pay them to utilize the facility?
No, ma'am, and my conversations with County Administrator Fouts, he's told us that we certainly would be able to use it in the event that we needed to for any purpose. If we wanted to say, go out and play disc golf, I think he would be more than happy for us to do that.
Who's gonna pay for the maintenance and the upkeep?
The county.
Okay.
Dr. Horton, having been down in that area in Hunter Complex and very familiar with that piece of property right there between the back of the softball fields and Hunter Complex, I think it's an excellent use of that land. Be good for the county and I might have to take up disc golf myself.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I think it'd be kinda fun if we could do maybe like a little tournament between us and the county commissioners once it's done.
Oh, Andrew. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you in group one is to approve renewal for the FY two thousand and twenty-one contract between the Calhwyte County Board of Education and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia Cooperative Extension Services, or 4H. Cooperative Extension Service, the University of Georgia College of Agricultural and Environmental Sciences, offer educational programs, assistance, and materials. This contract is for services between the Calhwyte County Board of Education and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia Cooperative Extension Service. This allocation funds the 4H Extension Associate Position, which provides leadership and coordination for the fifth grade school club program. The contract is in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for September first, two thousand and twenty, through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve renewal for FY two thousand and twenty-one contract between Calhwyte County Board of Education and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia, which is 4H. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, second.
You didn't ask for comments?
Any discussions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I just wanted to tell y'all that when I was in the fifth grade, which was a long time ago, I learned how to make cornbread muffins, and I'm still making them that way.
We do love 4H, we do love 4H. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you tonight is to approve moving our group life, supplemental life, dependent life, short-term disability, and long-term disability to Lincoln Financial. Housing Associates periodically reviews our benefits and brings recommendations to us. They recommend moving our group life, supplemental life, dependent life, short-term disability, and long-term disability to Lincoln Financial. This change will save the system approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars for FY twenty-one and also save employees approximately one hundred and eleven thousand dollars for FY twenty-one. Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Do I have a motion to approve moving group life, supplemental life, dependent life, short-term disability, and long-term disability to Lincoln Financial?
So move.
Any discussion?
Just one quick question. It's, I understand and I appreciate that it's saving the money, saving the employees' money especially. But what about things like their deductibles? Will they stay consistent with what they've been accustomed to, or do their deductibles increase?
Mr. Chapman, you want to take that one for?
There are no decreases or negative changes to any of their benefits.
Including their deductibles?
Most of these would not have a deductible with.
So, okay, that's neutral then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you is to approve a resolution to request Georgia Department of Education assistance in developing the five-year local facilities plan. Approval is requested for a resolution to request assistance from the Georgia Department of Education to develop the new five-year local facilities plan. A copy of the resolution is attached. Recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a resolution to request Georgia DOE assistance in developing the five-year local facilities plan. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
For the last action item in group one, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, Dr. Mark Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The following policies have been on the table and available for public review for the last month per your requirements, and with your approval, the following will be adopted. Policy GMB, professional personnel transfer. Regulation GMB dash R, which is professional personnel transfer related. Policy EDG, bus accident reporting.
Madam Chair, recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the policy revision. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Dr. Guy, I'm sorry, I meant to ask you earlier, did you get any public feedback?
No, sir, not on the policies and regulations. Typically, we have a larger slate, but on these particular ones, I did not get any of this go around.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Dr. Horton, action item group two.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The only action item that I have in group two is to approve the guaranteed maximum price for Northgate High School renovation and modifications. We're requesting approval of the guaranteed maximum price from Mija Construction Company for the Northgate High School renovation and modifications. The GMP is twelve million, nine hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, and it does include accepted alternates. We do have a breakdown of the GMP attached. Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent for the guaranteed maximum price bid by Mija for Northgate High School renovation and modifications. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, group three? We do not have any of those. Superintendent's report.
Call on Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Keith Chapman, bring your sales, tax, and budget.
Budget report, July is the first month in our new fiscal year. We were over budget approximately forty-three thousand dollars, pretty close, and not unusual at the start of the year. Sales tax receipts, we continue to see good numbers there. While the state's economy has trailed off some, our collections were over two point four million. Our year-over-year increase is eight point three one percent.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. For your facilities and construction report tonight, I will call your attention to a few projects that we have going on. The first one on the list there is the Nixon Center addition and renovation. That project is substantially complete. They are still doing some work in the parking lot out back. I was out there last week, and the center is absolutely beautiful. A lot of finishing work that's going on. High school tennis court replacements are ongoing. The East Calhwyte one is the one that's probably the most in-depth right now. I was out there day before yesterday. Project is progressing nicely, and Northgate, I believe they're still curing those courts, and hopefully, we'll get those painted and finished here in the next couple of months as the weather allows. Sewer line extension at Northgate is continuing on, that work continues, scheduled to be completed here in the near future, but it is progressing nicely. Same thing at Shaw Road and Cannon Gate, the sewer work there is all progressing nicely. Paving at East Calhwyte High School substantially complete, and they will get those new gates installed for us under a separate contract here in the next few weeks. New middle school on Shaw Road, if any of you have been out there, the middle school continues to come out of the ground. All the floor slabs have been poured. Structural steel and roof decking is well along on that project, and we are still scheduled for occupancy a year from now, next August. Middle school, HVAC, all of those projects are substantially complete, and they are, they're scheduled for when students do return to have air conditioning in those middle schools. You heard a little bit about Northgate High School addition renovations and modifications. We'll turn Mr. Cheek and his crew loose on that, and they will get started with that project here in the next few weeks with completion of that scheduled for next summer. Security upgrades at Noonan Crossing and Thomas Crossroads, work is substantially complete there. We'll remind you that those are the last two elementary schools to install the shield system, so we will have all of our elementary schools that have the shield system in them now. You'll see Syntegix, the Syntegix security system is still on the list. I do have a meeting with them tomorrow, and we will have administrative training in the next couple of weeks to complete that project. HVAC modifications, we put those back on your report for Arnold Middle, Jefferson Parkway, Thomas Crossroads, and Noonan Crossing. One of the things we discussed, I think, back in March was trying to go ahead and get that process started earlier in the year this year. So, we're gonna, Mr. Cheek's gonna get that process rolling so we can ensure that we get that work done. The last one there that I have, we've been, if anybody's been by Evans Middle School, you may have noticed in the last few months, a couple of very large sink holes, and that was due to a pipe failure at Evans. Wanted to take a second to once again thank Mr. Fouts and the county. They have supplied a great deal of labor for us on that project through an intergovernmental agreement, and I can't thank them enough for what they've done to help us save some money on that. That work is substantially complete, and we will get turf installed there, grass installed there here in the course of the next few weeks. Madam Chairman, that's all I have on facilities and construction report.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. As you know, at each meeting, we set aside a time. What, one more superintendent? Oh, sorry, I missed one, apologize. Middle School Distorting Line Work Committee summary.
This time, I call on Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Vince Bass, to talk to you about our middle school redistricting line committee work.
Thank you, Superintendent Horton. As y'all recall, the committee of parents from Arnold, Lee, and Madras Middle School met during the months of January and February of last school year with the task of reviewing data and to assist in the development of district line options for the board to consider for the new middle school that will be located on Shaw Road. First of all, I'd like to tell you the committee did an excellent job, and they really worked well together as a team, and I would like to personally commend them as a group for the time and the effort that they put into this, put into this project. They had a goal to develop a boundary line plan that looked to adjust approximately a hundred and fifty students from Arnold Middle School, two hundred students from Lee Middle School, and four hundred students from Madras Middle School. As a committee, they reviewed transportation data, they looked at traffic and bus patterns, they reviewed demographic data, they also looked at some natural boundary line options, and they worked very hard to make the new boundary lines as clean as possible. What they have provided you as a board are two boundary line proposals to be reviewed. On the maps you have, these new lines are overlaid to our current middle school lines so that you can see exactly what the lines would look like and where it would affect the middle schools currently. These options, I will tell you, adjust Arnold by approximately a hundred and seventy-five students, Lee Middle by approximately a hundred and eighty-five students, and Madras Middle School by four hundred to four twenty-five. So, they did a very good job of getting pretty close to that goal of students to look at moving. I will tell you both options will put the middle schools involved in very good standing and fairly equal the population of all of our middle schools around the seven hundred to eight hundred mark, so all fairly equal in size. I'd also like to show you that they reviewed a grandfathering plan for students. This plan is consistent with the plan we've used in the past with redistricting. So, I think it's fairly consistent and equitable what we've done in the past. As a board, our next step, or as a school system, would be to post these two options on the Calhwyte County School System website for public view, get some input. We will attach the grandfathering plan as well to be viewed with a goal of September or October board meeting, bringing to you the input we gathered from the posting to help make a decision and finalize the new middle school district lines. Any questions?
I may have missed it, I'm sorry. What was, for option two, what were the numbers?
They were both very close. One, I don't have them exactly in front of me, but there was about a forty to fifty student difference. And it really just, it was that north corridor around the Highway twenty-nine north area that they worked.
Mr. Bass, would it not be a little more prudent for us to wait and see what enrollment is going to be?
And we will.
And then, because it appears for all the work that they did that this was data that they used prior to the unrest that we have right now and the uncertainty as to how many students are actually coming back into our schools. So, before we would vote on this, wouldn't we want to readdress the numbers?
Yeah, we will, and that's, yeah, and that's one reason I was kinda hoping around October. The end of September and first of October are really good numbers as a school system that you've kinda got over the, some lag of moving in, and it balances out. Usually, October and March are really good numbers. But I also would tell you, you start pushing longer than October, if you're gonna open a school in August, you need a principal in place, I would say, as soon after the start of the year to start staffing a building. So, I agree with you on the longer you can wait on those numbers, but it's a fine line of waiting too long, too. That's all I have, Ms. Horton, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass, and if it pleases the board, we'll get those maps up on the website, we'll get public comment on those, and probably, most likely, the October meeting, we would bring you that public comment and some options for approval there. Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Now, as you know, we set aside a time every, and we're about on time for that, is at seven fifteen for public comment. Mr. Robertson, I'm gonna ask you to be our timekeeper. The people that are, we have five, four signed up to speak tonight. We are gonna bring them in as we did earlier, and when they come in, I will, we have, our first speaker is Michael Prosser. Welcome, Mr. Prosser. We are gonna time you, you have five minutes to address the board, and let me remind you, you signed a public comment agreement, thank you.
Thank you, and I welcome, I appreciate the welcome and the opportunity to be able to speak before you. I know you're very busy dealing with tax matters and budget matters, but I wanted to take the opportunity to talk about a very critical decision that's gonna be coming here in a few weeks, and that is the resumption of in-class instruction within our schools. I had the opportunity to attend the last board meeting where you voted on a plan to start school online, and having listened through the information and the data presented, I want to thank you for putting together a well-reasoned, well-thought-out plan, but I was very concerned about several aspects of what went into that decision. Listening to the Department, Georgia Department of Health information, I was struck by the language that they used concerning the level of cases that were occurring at that time in Calhwyte County. I believe they termed it sustainable uncontrollable transmission, along with some projections that indicated that the number of cases would continue to rise through the month of August, and that that was putting your plans for starting the school year in jeopardy and resulted in the decision that you made. What I did not hear were any other information, any other data points, any other. What I did not hear were any other information, any other data points, any other considerations that went into that decision. And as you know, simply looking at positive cases is a very, very narrow viewpoint of the entire risk that the county and the community and our students are under. Looking at the data on a daily basis, as I'm sure all of you are, I think we're optimistic that we have reached the peak in those cases and that they're now starting to trend downward. But what you also, well, I think we also should consider is that it's not just a matter of positive cases, it's the matter of positive outcomes. So the number of hospitalizations, the number of fatalities remain flat in our county, and indeed, Calweta County compared to many of our neighbors around the state have done remarkably well as far as being able to control the spread of this virus. I also did not hear any consideration about the negative long-term impact to our students and our community. I'm sure you have discussed this amongst yourselves, but I can see it on a daily basis, the isolation, the increase in depression, suicides, drug abuse, violence, malnutrition, the regression in education from our students, the lack of opportunities that are not going to be available to them if they're not able to resume a normal school experience. So the question I have today is what criteria, specific criteria, will you be using when you make your assessment in late August that will determine if we're able to transition back to in-class instruction? And I encourage you to publish that criteria so that the public can understand what goes into that decision, and that we can hopefully be able to monitor and support that decision when it's made. So that's my primary reason for being here today. And I think if you look at all of the data, and again, my hope and prayer is that it continues to trend in a positive direction, but also look at other experiences of other school districts around the country, and indeed, around the world. I happened to read a study coming out of the UK this week that indicated that they monitored 20,000 students between April and July in their schools, 20,000 students and staff across 100 facilities, and the takeaway from that study was that the rate of transmission is very, very low in our schools. So they're using that study and that information to be able to move forward with in-class instruction when they resume in the fall. So again, I encourage you to look at the entire scope of data, of the experiences from other locations, and making your decisions so that we can get our students back in class and be able to fully participate in all of their extracurricular activities. Okay? So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have Brandon Hundley. Brandon Hundley, come to the podium, please.
Hello, everyone. How we doing?
Doing well.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Horton, thank you, School Board, for allowing me to speak. So my name's Brandon, I have two children in Calweta Schools. They're gravely troubled by the prospect of remote learning. Today, my objective is to be heard as a parent's voice, talk some directional statements to gain alignment on how important school is and what the data tells us to date, introduce something called Risk Adjusted Basis for Decision Making, and encourage everyone, students, teachers, administrators, parents, family members, to do their own research on the actual data without spin. Education is an essential service, I think we can all agree on that. Remote learning will not be as effective as in-school learning. At this point, we know enough to categorize the risks to children. Children are affected by this virus less than any other group. They play the least role in transmission of the virus. They are most affected by any policy that we're making as a county about school. They also have zero voice in this decision, and their futures are the most impacted. It's obvious some want to return, because obviously, this is a hot-button issue for all of us. Some do not. What I want is a blended option. If you want to go, do; if you don't, don't, okay? But at a minimum, give us an option for either. So let's talk about assumptions, too. We're assuming that kids are safer at home than in school, so we're replacing one unified approach to safety where we would have protocols in place, oversight, and we're going to replace it with tens of thousands of unique circumstances where kids will either be minimally supervised all the way to completely unsupervised. I do not think that that is a safer environment than in-school. We assume that teachers and administrators will be safer with remote learning. This could be the case if said teacher or administrator chooses to go home and stay in their basement and not live life at all, but that's not reality, is it? I personally have done the following with teachers recently. I've spent time at public pools, residential public pools, I've worked out in public gyms, I've been over to their houses, I plan to go to the beach on a vacation with teachers within the month. I'm planning for combined learning for my kids while they're in the remote learning situation with teachers' childrens. In addition, I walk into manufacturing plants every day that have been up and going ever since this pandemic started that were deemed essential where everything is just fine. Have we had cases? Of course we've had cases, right? But we have plans in place to minimize the transmission, and we have plans in place on how to deal when we have a case. At the same time, we're entering so-called essential businesses every day with exposure potential. Grocery stores, home improvement stores, we all need these, right? What about soccer practices? What about liquor stores that have been deemed essential with retail workers at liquor stores that have been open since day one throughout this entire pandemic? Think about this hypocrisy. In high school, we say fall sports can be safe, and we're allowing people to practice, but we say they can't go to school? In college, we say on-campus learning is okay primarily, but we can't play football there. Think about that, directionally. Those two are in direct conflict with each other. Is it okay to go to the store in variable situations that you can't control, but it's not okay to go to school and provide an essential service that is imperative for our children's future where we can control the situation is much better? So let's talk about risk and how it compares to other relative risk factors when I talked about this risk-based decision-making. The risk for children to significant illness from COVID is significantly less, far less than that of the seasonal flu. That's the data, that's not me. Under 24 years of old, how many COVID deaths have there been in this country since February 1st? Yes, sir?
You've got one minute.
Oh, sorry. 270 deaths from COVID, 29,216 from other reasons. So all that said, I'll skip some of my stuff, sorry. Let's agree that when we say we must keep kids safe, when we vote to not put them in school, we're making 100% hollow statements. That is undisputable with any rational thinking. Talk about the other risks to age groups. 92% of COVID deaths are above 55 years of age, and 81% total are above 65 years of age. You're at greater risk if you're in the 45 to 54 age group from unintentional injury versus COVID-19, and you have a very similar risk of suicide as you do as COVID-19. The contributing cases mentioned for COVID deaths, only 6% of those have COVID lists is the only thing. All the rest have an average of 2.6 comorbidities. My only point being, we can determine our personal risk, and we can determine who needs to be in school and who doesn't. If education is an essential service, let's agree it's a destination that we all need to get to, to be back in school, and let's figure out how to do it, okay? It's possible, it's being demonstrated out there every day and right now. Calweta stats, 21% of kids are economically disadvantaged, 11% students with disability, and 4% second language learning. Not everyone is going to get a fair shake on remote learning, it's that simple. Let's not even debate it. We talk about cases, as cases go up and death does not follow, the same trajectory, mortality goes down.
I will let you finish that comment, you are out of time.
Okay. As I'm walking out, the only thing I'll say is, like Mr. Michael.
I just want to know what criteria we're going to be using? What data said what criteria we're going to be using to assess going back to school?
I want to, I want to say something. This is only for three weeks, and then we're regoing to evaluate that. There are many schools that aren't even, school systems that are not even starting until after Labor Day, so at least they will get something for those three weeks. But the people I'm hearing talking and the emails that I have received, they think we're going to do it all year long, and I don't know where they got that idea, but this is for three weeks.
Yes, ma'am. I understand, and I certainly hope it's for three weeks, but three weeks from now, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of things that could change, and those goalposts have been moving since day one. Flu might be here, who knows what'll be here, and who knows what people will make of that situation? We need to get our foot in the door when we can to go back to school, in my opinion.
Thank you.
I appreciate you all, I really do. I know it's a tough situation.
May I comment on that as well?
You may. You have one minute to respond.
Because Ms. Sue, I'd like to chime in on, I think you and I may have been talking to some of the same parents, Ms. Sue. One of the things that I think would have been very, very helpful, had we released the survey, the chart, everything that we used last Thursday to make this reopening decision, as well as that report that was brought forward by the Department of Public Health that we used as the criteria to make that reopening decision. I think if the public had had access to that data maybe a week before, because that data, the chart that we created or the school system created, the information the Department of Public Health submitted, all of that didn't come together just boom and it happened. If we had submitted that, and hopefully, the new data that we're getting ready to make another decision on, which is what this gentleman's talking about, that needs to be put forward to the public before we have a meeting, so that they know what it is that we're going to be talking about and the direction that we're leaning in, because this came as a huge shock to a lot of people, and they were trying to figure out how are they going to budget and manage childcare, the additional cost of childcare, scheduling? This whole thing, it caught people unaware, and I think that that is a lot of the angst that we have been hearing in the community, and the anger, and the confusion. So I think if we could just prepare the public a little bit better in advance before we just kind of spring it on them, that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Meek. Let me remind board members, according to our policy, if you want to respond to a speaker, you have one minute to make that rebuttal to that speaker or respond to that speaker. Any other comments?
I would just say, Mr. Hundley and I had a chance to meet the other day. I enjoyed our time together, and he and I, we were able to talk about some of the same concerns that he's voiced tonight, and I look forward to working with him as we progress through this to get our kids back in school.
Yes, sir, if you need something, call me. I'm willing to give up my personal time to help figure out solutions, or even be open to other things that the school board needs, and I mean that.
Thank you.
It's a big decision, don't take it lightly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Daryl Myers. Hi, Daryl. Let me remind you, you have five minutes to address the board. Each board member will have a minute to respond if they choose.
All right, that's why I got one page, five minutes, so we'll make this quick with, I got six points, and basically hitting what Brandon hit on. The big thing that I'm looking at, I'm looking at CDC stats. CDC stats say that this is very minimal, mild to kids as a whole. Yes, there are chances that somebody can have adverse effects, there are issues that people can have. However, the report that I pulled before Brandon had his stats is I saw 52 deaths this summer through mid-July. There were over 100 deaths for the flu. So just looking at that in general, the CDC has an article on 23 July, it says, "No other setting has more influence on a child's health and well-being than the school." It also says, "Evidence and info about transmission, the way germs are spread person to person, COVID-19 to children is relatively limited. Evidence from other countries suggests that pediatric cases resulted from children becoming infected by a family member, not at school, getting it at home, going out to Home Depot, going to Walmart, getting it and transmitting it that way." Kids, you know, mild to no symptoms, most kids are very asymptomatic, they don't even know they have it. But it's also showed that, hey, when you're asymptomatic, you're not coughing, you're not, you're not going out and spreading stuff all over. And we've got masks, and we have a plan that's in place that you guys came up with that was fantastic, and I like your comments that you just said about being off-guard. I have a very, very angry wife that's at home that wants all of you replaced, or wants to know who voted no, so we can vote that out and get that public. And this is democracy, we're voted positions, you're supposed to represent us, and we're talking about the data and the surveys, the rumors that are floating on, and they may be wrong, are that roughly 70% of the county voted to have in-class option available. That's what most people are going off of. I don't know if that's true or not, I think it is. Everybody I've talked to has it, but those results were never published. I know that you've seen what's going on in the state, there are other school districts that are having, oh, this case, that case. How many of those cases are in the hospital? How many kids are symptomatic and having issues? They don't, they don't say that, I don't know what it is, but it's more who's infected, and I've talked about how, who has recovered. How many kids recover? Plan's in place, it was almost like a prison for the plan, but hey, they're still going to go to school. My kids are going to get a better education with a teacher in a classroom, even if they have to stay in the classroom, and they go out to recess as a group, and they eat lunch in that classroom. Big thing is, we want the option. If you're not comfortable with it, there is the virtual option. I don't have a problem, and I think most people, if you have a person who is at home who's high-risk, let them enjoy that option, let them do the virtual. But for somebody like me, who is comfortable, and you're worried about legal, hey, something happens to a kid, this kid gets sick, something happens, give us a waiver. I will gladly sign a waiver, and I guarantee almost all of my neighbors will sign a waiver that says, hey, if my kid gets sick, I'm not going to hold you responsible. That's a decision that I made with educated information to make a decision about my kid to go to school. Like I said, I believe it's more important. Another question, I've got some teachers that live next to me, how come the teachers were not surveyed? They said they never got a survey about who's comfortable going and teaching. I don't know, the ones I've talked to, they are very comfortable going back to their rooms and teaching their kids. They want to go back. I am sure that there are some out there that don't. I don't know how many that is, I would assume it's small, but it might not be. Give them the option to teach the virtual, let the ones who want to teach in person, let them teach in person, get a survey, let the county know how many teachers are comfortable going back to school and teaching their kids. And again, the plan to return, what are the metrics? I see it being a sliding scale. Yeah, we go three weeks to readdress, but is it just going to keep getting the can kicked out? I would much rather know, my wife would much rather know right now, that, hey, we're just going to cancel all the way until December, or we're just going to cancel the whole school year until we get a vaccine. I would much rather know that and then go three weeks, three weeks, three weeks down the line. I want to know right now, hey, what are those metrics that need to be met so we can go back to school and meet that, when we've met that? Because like I said, the media, in my opinion, blows everything out of proportion. Look at hard numbers, look at the CDC. Like I said, understand it's, they're vulnerable people, we understand that they're high-risk people, but give us the option, give us virtual, give us in-person. I'd be perfectly fine with going back to school tomorrow, I am comfortable with my kids, I believe that I would be fine, I believe that my kids would be fine. I also understand that, yes, there's a chance that my kids could get kicked out, and they could get, they could get sick, but I'm willing to deal with that, because I think the stats show that my kid and myself are going to most likely be fine. I got worse risk of getting hit by a car walking down the street of somebody under 50. So I want to say thank you for giving me some time, but please, you know, seriously think about going back to school, giving us the option. There's a reason why Trinity and some of these other public schools, or private schools, they don't have openings anymore, they filled up. Parents said, so people in this county are comfortable sending their kids back to school. I just want you to be comfortable, like I said, give me a waiver, I'll sign it, and we will not hold you responsible for any issues that go on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Chris Proctor.
Yeah, I want to take this time to talk to you guys about something that happened in the past and something that's going on right now. So one thing for me that touches real close to my heart is that our seniors didn't get a graduation this year. So my son was a graduating senior this year, graduated with honors. He started school troubled, struggled. He got to the apprenticeship program. He got to the apprenticeship program that you guys have, found something that he loved. Kid graduated with honors. He did good to make a C before he got into this program. We postponed the graduation, looked at defeat on his face. Then you canceled it. He was destroyed. I've got something that I can't fix as a parent for one of my kids. You don't know what that's like. It's horrible.
Sir, he needs you to step to the mic, thank you.
I'm sorry. It's horrible to have a problem that you can't fix as a parent for your child. Now, he's 18 years old, but he's still my child, he's still my child, I still love him, I'd do anything in the world for him. I'm here today for him, I'm not a speaker. I work in a manufacturing environment, I'm an industrial engineer, I don't speak in front of people. But you guys made a decision that affected kids that are going to step out into adulthood. I don't think you understood what you were doing, and what it was going to do to keep these kids. It's horrible. You know, we got counties all around us that figured out a way for these kids to graduate. Pike County, which, I look at Pike County, and I look at Coweta County, you know Pike County's down here, Coweta is up here, they went to Atlanta Motor Speedway and graduated. That's social distancing at its best, right? That place sits seats 200,000 people. But not having something for our students of 2020 to celebrate is unacceptable as a parent, and the disdain that my wife had for you guys making that decision, I just want you to know what it's like. Now, as far as school opening, you know, there's a lot of things that we could talk about. We've got this horrible thing called COVID. Who knows where it came from, where it's going? It's bad. But keeping kids out of school for an extended period of time is harmful. Besides from a child's home, you know, the school is the best setting that can influence a child, their health and their well-being. It provides them education, it creates a safe environment for learning, nutritional needs, and facilitates physical activity. You know, we live in Coweta County. Not all of us live in nice areas of Coweta County. There's kids in this county that are safer being at school than they are at home. They get fed better at school than they do at home, and that's sad, you know? This day and age, we still have that going on, we have it in our city. My daughter's a cop from Newton, she sees it every day. We're like Little DeKalb County now, you know? We need to get these kids in a safe environment where they can learn and grow up to be adults like us, you know? Keeping them out of school is not the right decision. Special needs kids, man, they really need school. Allowing them to fall behind, I heard a rumor, whether it's true or not, you know, we're going to allow the special needs kids to fall behind, hope we bring them back up when school starts? I don't know if that's true or not. You know, what are parents supposed to do that both work?
One minute is right.
All right. You know, we have a hard time as working parents to get home, do the little bit of homework they did have to do, feed them supper and get them in the bed. Last but not least, is the decision to open schools, don't make that decision here in a bubble. Get the community involved, like the gentleman here said, you know, let the parents have a voice. If some parents want to keep Jack and Jill at home because they're scared to send them to school, give them that option. But the ones that aren't scared, let us send our kids back to school. And for God's sake, the class of 2021, let those kids graduate, and reconsider doing something for the class of 2020, because they deserve it. It's a rite of passage to move into adulthood, to graduate from high school. We all did it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Horton, Dr. Horton?
And Mr. Proctor, I know, I think we're supposed to meet tomorrow, I'm looking forward to it. I just, related to graduation, it would be unfair for me to allow this misconception to be out there. Just want to be clear that, at the end of the day, I made the final decision on that, this board didn't. And we'll talk more in-depth about why I did tomorrow, but I just, publicly, I wanted to make note that that was not a board decision, that was something I did, and we'll talk more about that.
Okay, fair enough.
If I could, just one second. Thank you for coming in today. I just wanted just to touch on one thing about the special needs children falling behind, that is a rumor, it's not true at all. Just wanted to make sure I said that. But if any parent does feel that way, our head of our special education, Melissa Casablanca, has already spoken to several parents, and she's more than willing to do that. I hope, yeah, if she's right there in the back, she's more than willing to do that as well.
Great. I mean, these kids are the future of this county. You know, we're all getting older, we need to think about them. They're not going to get in the seats that we're in by not going to school.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Proctor, I just want to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that anybody on this board made any decision last board meeting in a bubble, okay? We've been looking at this since March, and the big question is, what are we going to do when school starts that? And that was a huge question, I mean, huge question. And it changed so many times between March, and then when we made the decision. And I understand about the kids, and how they're a little, they're less susceptible to COVID than us grownups are. However, we've got about, we've got over 3,000 employees in our system, okay? And we've got a responsibility to protect those people as well, okay? And there's, and I'm going to speak for the entire board, because I know they feel the same way I do. There's no one in this room who wants to get kids back in the classroom anymore than this board.
Right.
And we're doing everything that we can, looking at numbers, looking at situations, and trying to make that decision so that we can get these kids back in school, okay? Because we realize that that is the best place for them. You're absolutely right, a lot of kids, that school is a safe haven for them.
It is.
It really is, I understand that, I get that. And we're working really, really hard, everybody in this room, the staff, and boy, we're working really, really hard. We appreciate you coming and sharing your comments, but don't feel like we just showed up on Tuesday night and pulled the trigger, because we didn't. We've been working on this since March.
I understand that, and that's just a term I used when I wrote the paper. Let me share something with you, I work for a manufacturing company. So, we have, in our division, we have 14 plants across North America. It ranges from Langley British Columbia, Cedra Puerto Rico, to Canada, up in Chicago. We've got two plants that are two blocks away from each other, in Elk Grove Village in Chicago. We've had COVID cases in our facilities. We had so many in one plant in Chicago that the employees walked out. We didn't stop, we're in central business, so we had to figure out what to do. They shut that plant down for two weeks, cleaned it from top to bottom. There is ways to get around it. We've had, you know, as many as 12 in one plant, but we didn't shut the doors, we figured out a way. Now, it cost us some money to bring cleaning companies in here, and put sanitation devices up, give masks out, but there's ways around it.
Thank you, sir. That is the last of the public comments. I'm going to open the floor to board comments. Does any board member have a comment? If not, I will take the lead on that. Thank you, guys, for allowing me the time to speak tonight. I did prepare something, as most of you know, I can get a little wordy. Thank you to the teachers that I see here tonight, it's very good to see you. First, I want to say thank you to Dr. Horton and our entire staff for the tireless work you all have done, and educated yourself on virtual learning. I know it is not easy, I know you're frustrated, I know you're stressed, but I also know that you're going to do what's right by kids, and I know that you're going to step up and have that professional performance that we know that you guys can do. This board is a nonpartisan board, and my focus has always remained on students and student achievement. It has always been my focus in my 10 years of service, to remain, to focus on students. As a mother of four, I'm eager for my youngest daughter to return to East Coweta. In my house, we are navigating virtual learning as well. My husband, I think, will probably be in the office, I may be on the porch, and she may be at the kitchen table, but we're trying to figure that out. It is my great hope for her to return to face-to-face instruction. My decision to go virtual was based on nothing, no political propaganda, it was based solely on seeking information from health officials. That is what I based my decision on. I want my own child to go back. I just wanted to share with you all that I know that our staff is working, Dr. Horton, I know you guys are all working, I've seen the Facebook memes, and all the things, and the frustrations, I appreciate my teachers being here tonight, know that you are heard. On our YouTube, folks, if you're a teacher out there, know that we see you, we hear you, and we support you. It is my great hope to keep everyone safe. I would be remiss not to mention, remiss is your root word, Andrew Copeland, but I've stolen, not to mention the school districts in Metro Atlanta who chose to go back. We are now seeing high numbers of COVID in those schools, and they are now closing those schools for a few days, virtually, to clean. So I want to thank this board, and Dr. Horton, for keeping our students safe, just as we do during tornado drills, just as we've done during inclement weather, just as we've done when we sit in crowded hallways with students with a tornado warning. We keep students safe, and we keep our staff safe. I am confident in my decision, it is my great hope, and my prayer, I have my Bible right here, it's my great hope and my prayer to return to face-to-face when conditions merit. I need my own back at East Coweta, don't think I'm qualified to teach her, but I just want to let you know that I hear, I feel the frustration, I hear it, I definitely read it in emails, but know that you're not forgotten, and we hear you, and our teachers are appreciated, and I thank you. Any other board comment? All right. If there are no more comments, I want, do we have a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero, we are adjourned.